I call the Department of Public Works to order. Stand for the pledge, please.
The pledge is allegiance to the God of the United States of America, to the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Jim, come on right up. Chris has been excused this morning. Morning, Jim. Everybody got the DPW report, I hope? Had a chance to read it? We'll start with the Highway Division. Any questions for Jim on the Highway? Jim, do you have anything extra on the Highway?
No, the only thing I'd like to point out is just we're up over 53 miles of asphalt we've put down so far this year. Still going.
Good. Mr. Preston?
I just would like to point out that the town received a grant for a rec path and on Fox Farm Road. And the county did that work this year. They also, the town contracted with them to do paving. And I just wanted to say they did an outstanding job on both. Really outstanding job on the rec path and Fox Farm Road. And the county paved Mountain View Lane for us. And outstanding. So, thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you very much.
Coming across, I come across Blue Ridge every Monday. They've got, I don't know if it's final. A layer towards the New Combe.
Okay.
But you should probably ride over a day after it rains. There's still one spot that has a large puddle in it. And if they top that, they're still gonna have that large puddle in the middle of the road. They have to do something with that before they finish up.
Okay.
Because that's a hazard.
Yeah, I'll check the status. That was brought up. Said that we've got some true and leveling to do there first.
Yep, there's a large puddle this morning when I came through.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to commend the payment project. I've been on several of the county roads it bathed and the roads that it did the school like. It did a nice job. I could work with the neighbors and the other back.
Okay. Buildings and grounds. Any questions on the buildings and grounds? Anything extra on that, Jim?
Maybe you'll notice we're starting to scrape and paint the freeze board, the soffits and fascia on these buildings. That's gonna take a few more weeks, but it's coming along pretty well.
Generators report. Any questions on the generators report? Health and safety codes? Nothing, no questions or anything? Nothing extra on that?
No.
Okay, moving right along. Public safety building, maintenance report. Any questions on that? Mr. Preston?
Just curious how we paid out with the generator? Do we know if it works or not yet?
I can't give you a final answer that it works. It has been working better. We've had a number of power outages and it has done its thing. It's turned on and turned off properly. However, we still have a situation where we think we're having some single phase that we're obtaining from NICEAG. NICEAG has installed some meters and they're logging the power that we get there to see if it might be something in the way they're delivering their power to us. It's better. It's not done. We're still working on it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We'll go on to engineering. See, you've got some construction bidding report. You want to do anything on the bridges with that?
Yeah, I'd be asking for a resolution. I've handed out a document with some planning for bridges. These are our 19 most critical bridges. And we've pretty much used up the last bridge bond that the Board did back in 2014. So I'm asking for a resolution to move forward with a bridge bond in the amount of $5 million. If you look at the handout that I provided, that $5 million is to basically handle the six bridges that are highlighted for construction in 2017 and 2018. And then two federal aid projects that are supposed to start in 2018 and 19 and the matching portion of that.
There is some pictures with it too, that I was sending out. Mr. Moore, you have a question? Oh, you want to move it? Okay. Mr. Marnell, was that a second? Do you have a question? Seconding? Okay, moved by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Marnell. When Jim and Chris met me on Friday, because they always meet with me on Friday before the meeting, they come up and discussed all this with me. And I asked them if they would hand out pictures with all these bridges. You know, the old saying, picture's worth a thousand words. I'm amazed at some of these bridges we have here. Any further discussion on it? Mr. Scazabala?
So how do we amortize this, Dan? How do we? We borrowed the $5 million now, which is gonna have a significant impact in 2017, correct?
Oh, absolutely. Well, I mean, not necessarily for 17 because, you know, obviously if you take it in 16, you don't have a first payment until, I mean, if you take it in 17. But Mike and I have been talking about this. We've got the other bridge bond. We may roll some of these and see if we can get a longer term and try to have a little less of a budget impact. But that is a discussion that we will have. And at some point you will, this Board will be asked to make that determination if we're gonna go out for a, you know, a duel with the ones that are outstanding and this one as a combined via our bond.
So the federal aid comes upon completion, correct?
Yeah.
Of the projects?
That's correct, yeah.
So we would do bands, I'm assuming?
Well, yeah, we would do bands for almost all of it until we got to the point where we needed to roll it to full bond.
Mike's here too if we need it further. If you have questions for Mike, I can have him come up if he needs them.
So the existing bond that we have for bridges, that's...
That was like four some million. I think Mike knows the exact number, but it...
Come on up, Mike.
Come on up, Mike. And we're due for a payment in November, I think, for that. But we may, if we do a roll, then we would do something different.
Yeah, the original bond back in 14 was for $4,345. What we did is started out with a one-year note, a bond anticipation note. And we only paid interest on it in 15. We borrowed it in December of 14. Last year in December of 15, we rolled it over for another year with the full amount of the principal, only paid the interest amount. What you're allowed to do on the bond, the band the first year. But now comes the second year, we have to make a payment on the principal. The other option is to take this $5 million along with the balance of the 4.3, or actually the 4.345, put it all in one big bond, make a $9,000, $9,345 bond and go out and get it all bonded for 15, 20 years. It's gonna give you a payment in 17, but depending on how long you do it, obviously the longer you do it, the less your payment's gonna be.
So that bond would be callable, obviously.
Not for the first few years. Generally, they're not callable for a while.
So how do we use our money when it comes in from the feds? That doesn't go towards debt?
It can go, you can put it in and put it to pay off your band.
Sure. You can set it aside for your payment.
He's saying a long-term bond for...
Yeah, you're probably looking at 15 years is probably what you're looking at.
As you get that revenue from the federal government, you can set that aside to help pay your note that year.
Yeah, we would just anticipate that revenue towards the cost of the bond payment.
Okay, to offset it.
To offset it. So the first few years, the net and the budget, the taxpayers' net would be as high because you'd have money coming in from the fed. After that, it would go up, obviously, once the federal money was used. But that may be a better way. With the way interest rates are going and the way I anticipate, who knows what's gonna happen after November? But it may be a good time to just bond the entire thing. If you don't, you're gonna have to come up with a fairly substantial payment on the 4.35. We could bond the whole 9.345 and pay the 4.345 out of that bond. And that would take care of the first bond and we just have the second.
Can we get a debt schedule?
We can, yeah. And what I'll do if you, if that's where you wanna go...
For existing debt, I mean, when you take the radio project, you take all this debt. I mean, my concern, obviously, is everybody else's, I'm sure, is the impact that's gonna have on each year's budgets just for debt service alone.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
No, and that's concerning.
That might be something we can put together and get it back to you by ways and means. And along with the payment schedules for some potential years for the whole 9.345 to give you a ballpark idea what it might be to add to it. But you're looking at our existing debt, what we're paying out now.
Existing and projected future, like on these bridges and...
Right. And then I know Jim has one more he's gonna be talking about.
Yeah, I see that.
Couple minutes.
Okay.
All right. I might as well stay up there.
I was gonna say you might as well stay up there.
You're gonna go on to do the other one.
Okay, any other discussions on that resolution? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Resolution carries. Now, the next resolution you have in front of you is for the equipment. Jim, you want to, Jim and Mike, you want to explain that one?
Yeah, this is that five-year equipment plan that we've discussed a few months ago. We are, two months ago, you gave me authority to go out to bid for the pieces of equipment that are in the 2016 year. And when I came back to purchasing, they said, "Well, you don't have any money." So this is, I'm requesting that $3.62 million equipment bridge, or bond, based on that five-year plan.
Somebody want to move that? Mr. Moore? Move on, Mr. Moore. Do we have a second on it? Mr. McNally and Mr. Gardner? Discussion? Mr. Scazabala?
Dan, I thought that you and I looked into serial bonds and we couldn't do them, I thought.
Well, we're gonna do a bond anticipation note.
Yeah, right.
It actually works out better. But this is, you've really already authorized us to do a bond for this.
No, I know, yeah.
But what you're doing now is the actual legal bond for Bond Council.
Right.
So this resolution will satisfy Bond Council's requirement for a resolution of this Board.
So it won't be a serial bond, though?
No, it don't, well, probably not.
I think, I think maybe the, there's a couple different ways to look at this. And maybe we need to look at a couple different options as we go and decide. In the past, we've done equipment bonds over a five-year band. But with all the debt with the bridge and everything, we need to look at the impact of that. The first year, in talking with Jim and with Chris, the needs are probably less than a million dollars, somewhere in around eight to eight-hundred-and-fifty, maybe nine-hundred-thousand at most. We could start with borrowing a one-year note on that and then as we go along, see where we are. Because you don't want to go out and borrow the whole 3.6 all at once. You're not gonna be paying it off for four years. And legally, you couldn't do that. You have to pay, you have to buy that stuff within a certain period of time. You can't just borrow money and hang on to it without buying something. So you need to, you need to do it in stages. The other alternative, and this is something that we discussed with both Dan Manning and with our Bond Council, is the possibility of putting this in with the bridge bond and then having a stepped bond. By that, I mean, the equipment may be in a lesser payout and the highways a longer payout. We could look at a couple different options in doing that. That would get you the, into the bond, serial bond for equipment rather than bands. But there's a couple different ways to finance it. We need, we need to start by getting this resolution to allow us to go out.
Explore the options. I mean, under equipment, I'm assuming you can only go 10-year periods.
Yeah, we could, we could do a 10-year, we could, potentially, we could do a 10-year bond for the 3.6 and a 15- or 20-year bond on the bridges and have the bond all in one. For the first 10 years, it'd be a larger payout. It would drop out the last five years because you don't have the equipment paid off. So it's kind of what I call a tiered bond where the first year, the first part, the first 10 years of the bond, you've got equipment and bridges in there. The last five, you've just got the bridges you're paying out. And there may be a way to backload some of that payment so the payments level out.
Mr. Bledy?
Mike, is there a difference between the interest rate on infrastructure versus...
No, not necessarily. There's obviously an interest rate difference in bands versus bonds.
I understand that.
But no, when you're looking at that and putting it all in one, it isn't. It's a couple of different ways. And I think that's something that we'll have to look at, how it fits in your budget, number one, in this budget environment, how it fits in the budget. And what's the best way to do it, to get the best bang for your buck with the least amount of net cost at the end where you're paying out a lot of interest versus a little interest. Obviously, in the past, bands have been the best way to go, but with bridges thrown in with this, we may want to look at a mixture.
Yeah, the, you know, in terms of the equipment is the useful life issue, how long we're gonna go out. You know, I don't want to go out too far with the equipment that, you know, that's gonna have to be replaced if it has to be replaced before the other bond is paid. So we just have to be careful.
We can shorten that. I mean, we can even use a seven-year life and so pay it off the higher end on seven years. It depends on how we want to structure it. That's something we'd have to talk with the Bond Council and with fiscal advisors, who's our financial people, to find out the best way to borrow this, to do it at the best rate. It may be better off just continuing to pay it off, the note on the bridges in a long-term bond and a band for the equipment, depending on how it works.
I'm assuming we looked at, I'm sure you did, the lease purchase versus...
It never works out well for me. You know, again, as soon as you start talking about a lease, you're talking about, you know, a lease interest charge on top of what you're, what you end up using.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's, I'm not a big believer in lease purchase.
I'm not either. We checked in our town and saw it was better than mine. Anybody else have any questions? If not, all in favor? Thank you, Mike. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution carries. Thank you. Fish hatchery. Do you have an update on the fish hatchery?
While we're still on engineering and bridges, if I could, if I could add one more. This is regarding Green Hill Bridge, which is in town of North Hudson. That bridge was replaced in 2007 and they left the existing abutments in front of the new bridge bearing concrete. And this summer, we found that a section of that old abutment had collapsed. We didn't think it was an emergency, so we went through the process with DEC, Army Corps, APA, and getting permits. We just about have those permits in hand and a recent inspection, they're really wanting us to, the structural engineer wants us to replace that or get that rearmored before spring flows. The trout prohibition period with DEC says that we have to be out of the water by October 1st. I have it out to four contractors for pricing right now. To do the work, the last week of this month is expected to be less than $35,000. So I should be able to do the work within our procurement policy if this Board will allow me to sign a contract immediately with one of those contractors. So I'm asking for a resolution to do that, as long as it's under $35,000, to get that done before the trout prohibition period is over.
You have a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Whitson and Mr. Marnell. Further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Carries. Is that what you have for the fish hatchery?
Nope. And for the fish hatchery, I guess I sent out some bills.
Well, I was gonna ask you about that.
And I've had a few responses. So I sent out bills. This is the first year that DPW has had the fish hatchery under our department. We've tried to figure out how, why, when bills were sent to towns in the past. There's very little rhyme or reason, other than a couple of towns that were specific because they paid for a certain size and quantity of fish. So I'm asking the Board, as you look at my bills or my request for donations, I'm asking for some direction in the future on whether we're charging towns for fish, whether we're not charging towns for fish, whether we're, what we're doing here, so.
Well, if I can start off the discussion, because I wrote it in here because I forgot to ask Jim and Chris about this last Friday. And when they sent the bills out, I gave them my opinion on it, that I don't think SS County should be charging for fish. Because, excuse me, when you stock the rivers and streams in our towns, it's not just the residents that catch those fish, it's tourists that catch the fish also, which we don't have a problem with that. We want tourists to come in for, to spend their money in our municipalities. But I still don't think it's fair for our residents to pay for the fish in our town. Now, although having said that, I think we should set some kind of policy. And I don't know if there's any rhyme or reason to what they were charging in the past. I don't think there was. I think we need to set something up, though. And if an entity in our towns want to buy fish for a private affair, they're gonna stock a little pond or something behind their place and they're gonna invite different people, they're gonna have a cookout, I hate to see cooking our fish, but they're gonna have something like that, you know? If they're gonna have something that they want to buy fish from us, then they should pay for it. If it's by invitation only, a fishing derby, something like this, but stocking in our own towns, no. I, my own feeling, and I wanted to open it up to the committee today about that. Now, Tom.
I agree, because indirectly, our residents are paying for them anyway, through the property taxes. So I don't believe that we should be billing individual towns for fish, with the exception of, as you said, if it's a, if it's a function for a, for a private entity, absolutely, but not for public streams and access areas and so on.
And I think they should come back with a price to the Board and let us know, you know, what year they should, how much they should be. Maybe at the committee, they should come up with that. Noel?
I was just gonna reinforce that. For years, I know we've never been charged for the public stocking of the bocadre or the branch. We purchase fish directly, it's for our fishing tournament. We used to sit down with Steve about the sizes, the quantities, and then we understood we would be charged for that. And I think that's a good system.
Some towns pay for that, for their fishing derbies, other towns don't. So this is why, this is why I brought it up.
Kinda like delivering mails.
Mr. Marnell?
We've been paying $1,000 for several years. Just paid it the other day. If you need culverts in your town and everybody uses, you get them to the county, you pay for them. And it's, I always sell those advertisements for the town, the town stocks, buys fish from SS County, stocks, school, wherever we stock them, brings tourists, tourists bring money. So I'm not against paying. Hey, the fish hatchery struggles anyway, so.
I don't have an opinion one way or the other. I just felt that all towns should, should, should get the same benefit. And since it's the first year that it's been under DPW, I felt it was now that I needed to tackle this issue.
Anybody else? Roby?
Yeah, I was, I have to tell you, Jim, I was caught off guard by it when I got it from you. Never paid for fish in eight years, and then I got the note from you. Obviously, if somebody's been paying for fish, it hasn't been North Elba. Maybe indirectly, North Elba's been paying for fish, but, but I guess my understanding is maybe the Visitors Bureau was paying?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, that's North Elba paying since I give them $50,000 a year. So they must make my contribution for me. So I would just, would like you in the future to direct all those bills directly to the Visitors Bureau.
Mr. Gardner? Mr. Gardner?
I'll move, I'll move a resolution that towns that are using them for town purposes and town public access areas not be charged for fish.
So let me just get a clarification now. So we're talking about, because Noel mentioned the fishing derby now, are you, are we charging you for fishing derbies or for things like that? Or are we not?
For private, yes. If a town is sponsoring, like we have a fishing derby for kids, no, I don't think it should be charged. We're all paying county taxes.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify the resolution. I'm not, I'm not taking an opinion one way or another.
Your resolution says just for private.
I mean, how much does it cost to raise a fish? Figure you raise one fish, you might as well raise 10 fish.
I'm curious, Jim, what amount of money has been raised or was raised last year from towns?
$10,000.
Contribute to the cost?
$10,000.
$10,000 was, was in the budget as revenue for this year. Again, DPW didn't create that budget, it was created for us, and I was asked to go get that revenue the same way that it was raised last year.
So towns have been paying?
Some towns have been paying.
This is, this is the problem, okay? And this is part of the discussion, the reason for this discussion, is that some towns paid, some towns didn't. It really depended on which town you were and maybe how you treated the director, I'm not sure. But, so, you know, it does need to be clarified, are we going to charge or are we not? If we're not, then we're $10,000 short on revenue at some point, whether we make that up somehow or not.
Well, I think, but he anticipated, he anticipated $10,000. I think the question was how much have we actually taken in?
Well, I'd have to look at that in actual, but...
So, so far, I have received a number of checks and we're probably at $6,500 thus far.
So the towns that have been paying, like the towns let them keep paying?
I think reimbursement might be in order, since we've been carrying the load.
Okay, Mr. Preston is next.
I guess just to maybe enlighten the rest of the Board, the Whiteface Region Visitors Bureau has bought fish for years and they're looking for three-year-old browns. And they paid, I believe, $3,500 a year. That money comes from, they have a Two-Fly Contest in May, and the money that's raised from that event goes back into purchasing fish. And I personally don't think there's any issue with that. We have a fishing derby at Stevens Pond up on Whiteface every year for the kids and the fish have always been provided at no cost. And so that's just a little background, but the Whiteface Region Visitors Bureau has purchased fish for years and years. And I would term that as a private entity, so to speak, that's specifically looking for a three-year-old brown. And they spent, I think it was $3,500 this year.
We charge $4 a fish for, for those three-year-old browns.
Yep. Mr. Farber?
Yeah, we, for a number of years, have paid $1,000 for the fish, but those fish are used in a private bond for our fishing game club. And I feel there's nothing wrong with that. However, to charge the towns for, as others have said, that are just put in the offtable, I don't think there should be any charge. Maybe on the west branch of the offtable, but not the east branch.
So, Mr. Scazabala, your resolution is not to charge the towns when they're putting them out to the public?
Exactly.
But charge private entities like Mr. Farber said, Mr. Preston?
They're all catching and release anyway. I mean, they're throwing them back in. Most are.
So we understand the resolution. Do we have a second on the resolution?
The resolution is that the 18 towns would not be charged for stocking of fish at any event. And the only charge for fish that the hatchery would do would be for private entities for private purposes, any event that's town-sponsored, any town-sponsored.
Yeah. No, that's not what Mr. Scazabala wanted. If it's a private pond sponsored by the town for kids and stuff, that's not charged. Does everybody understand it, Neil?
Yeah, I mean, if somebody's requesting, we probably should have a form in place that you can give the DPW. If you're requesting fish for a specific purpose, you should have to fill that form out and put down what the reason is you want those fish, you know? Yeah. Other than a fish fry.
We've got $10,000, we've got $10,000 surplus fish that we're getting ready to release right now. And this Board has previously said they'd like to sell any surplus fish. And you, you approved that, that was approved through OGS, for you to do that. So we should create a form so we know what to charge people anyhow.
But I thought the intent of that was if we were selling them in the private sector.
It is.
It is.
Same thing.
Our sector.
That's right. We're talking the same thing, the private sector.
We still have a resolution on the floor with no second. Do we have a second from anybody? Further discussion? Mr. Preston?
I just want to point out two things. Number one, all the three-year-old browns are in the town of Wilmington. And North Elba gets the most fish and I have no problem with him paying for it.
Duly noted. Any other discussion or questions? Mr. Mary?
Again, I'm not on this committee or anything. I would still have a problem not charging a principal municipality that has non-public access waters for us to get a fish for no cost. If they're going into public access waters, absolutely.
Right.
But if they are contained within a private, where we have our fishing derby, for instance, But if they are contained within a private, where we have our fishing derby, for instance, I think I should pay for those fish.
Is that what your resolution was talking about?
Well, I, who, so what do you get, authorization from, from the people that own the pond, the fish there?
Um, actually mine, I'm willing to pay for it, that's actually public access, but I know we have other places where people do have fishing tournaments that are not accessible. Those I don't think should qualify.
I, I agree, they shouldn't.
Okay, that goes back to what Mr. Gardner was asking.
Yeah.
So, if it's, uh, confined, even if the town wants it for somebody, if it's confined to invitation only, then you're being charged for it. That's why we need this application to fill out.
Absolutely.
Okay, everybody got that? Yes.
With the amount of work that we gotta do at the fish hatchery, we need every dollar we can get, and I don't think it'll hurt any town to spend a thousand dollars for stocking, whether the person comes in from New York, fishes one day, goes back, or not, we need, we need money over there. We got a lot of projects, uh, it's gonna be expensive, so a thousand dollars from a town is a nickel from a, or less, but it's not gonna really hurt.
Well, it is, when I'm looking at a point oh-six-eight increase in my budget, and that thousand wasn't there before, and I got an increase in elk insurance, I'm looking at my town, I'll tell you right now, my town's hat's on, and when I'm looking at the tax cap like that, a thousand dollars and other people asking, is a lot of money. Mr. Farber?
You will state that I am on the committee, but, um, we did recently receive a grant, where I think it was a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, um, from the state. We will be receiving those from the, from the Metta, so I think we're pretty well, uh, but I eventually am moved.
Thank you. Mr. McNally?
Somewhere, there must be a, a schedule of, or a lot in amount for each town, and how many fish are going to each town or body of water every year.
Yeah, there is, I mean, that's an annual stocking.
And there's, there should be no charge to the towns for that fish. If people want additional fish, I think they should, they should pay for it. Now, if I wanna have a fishing derby, town-sponsored and town bought our water, and we want additional fish, I can see waiving the charge on that. But to continue charging game clubs and things like that, I think it's acceptable. But if we have, how many more fish, additional fish this year? Ten thousand?
Ten thousand, yep.
You know, the taxpayers are paid to raise those fish, and if we don't sell them, let's get them out in the water so that people can enjoy them, or the public can use them, cause we're paying for that as taxpayers.
Starting right now.
Thank you.
Do you have a handout, Mr. Manal?
Yeah, I'm, uh, a little, are we gonna amend this, uh, resolution that's on the floor to more like Mr. Gardner pointed out, and, uh, Mr. Mary Hugh, as to, uh, private streams, um, we're gonna, and ponds, we're gonna pay for, so, I'm confused, I guess, as to where we are with it.
Yeah, well, my understanding is that, yep, yeah, the fish are being stocked, even if it's town-sponsored, if it's being stocked in water that is not accessible to the public, then we will charge. If it is stocked in water that is accessible to the public, we will not charge.
Is that, we don't need an amendment, it's Mr. Scazavava who moved the resolution, agrees with it, from Mr. Manal? Okay, so we don't need an amendment.
I, I just would point out that the Visitors Bureau buys those fish, and that's, it's stocked all in public water, so, you do what you want, I'm not gonna sit here and, and fight that you charge them, but that's what, I mean, they're asking for a specific fish, specific size, but it's all going in public water, so if you wanna give it away, that's okay with me.
No, we weren't, I wasn't looking at that, we were looking at towns that were buying them for, you know, that way, not private.
What, what time's that fish truck getting to whenever this afternoon?
It's in Eagle Lake today, actually.
Okay, so, here's my understanding, that any private entity that wants to buy fish is gonna pay for them. I don't care where they stock them. I think it's stock them in the ocean for all I care. Any town that wants fish and stocks them publicly, they won't be charged. Any town that buys fish and stocks them in a private pond, not accessible to the public, will be charged.
Is that your understanding, the mover, Mr. Scazavava?
Yeah, I mean, if you stock them in public waters, that the towns, you know, own, like Row Pond, Bartlett Pond, North Pond, um, which is in west, I mean, that fish could end up in Crown Point, so why am I buying his fish? I disagree.
From now on, I want all the three-year-old browns. The old browns are now going to the North Elba.
Fish swim.
Okay, so everybody understands what, so we can keep this going, everybody understands what the resolution is now?
This is like a Bible study.
Called a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries. So much for the fish. Mr. Harren.
Something related to the, related to the fish. Number one, we have, uh, surplus of ten thousand fish because of the efficiencies of our maintenance crew, and may have hired to be committed for that. Also, this year has been a severe year for water resources. Um, one event that is happening in the town of Crown Point is we are having our aquifer analyzed, uh, and this will have, uh, excuse the comment, an overflow to the fish hatchery. And if you will expand on that, uh, Charlie, I would appreciate it.
Um, Charlie and the town of Crown Point have hired a hydrogeologist who is, um, looking at, uh, the availability of water in and around the fish hatchery site. Um, for those of, those who don't already know, Crown Point's, um, well source, and they're currently their sole source of water, is immediately adjacent to and almost surrounded by fish hatchery property. So, um, part of the investigation being done for Crown Point is looking at fish hatchery property and, um, the three sources that currently supply the fish hatchery, being the Springs, Rainey Brook, and Putnam Creek. So, we're gonna get some recommendations out of this report, the county is, um, regarding if Crown Point were to keep that as their sole source of water, what might need to be done to balance water between Crown Point and the fish hatchery's needs. Is, is that what you're looking for, Charlie? I think that's, that, um, and we should be getting that report in the next few weeks, as you move forward with your project.
This is the most opportune, opportune year to do that, inasmuch, and it's, it's certainly been a test, what the Brooks, that supply of the fish hatchery.
Very good. Any questions on that? Thank you. Go under miscellaneous, fairgrounds? Anything for that? Any questions on the fairgrounds? Water and sewer projects?
Nope.
Nothing? Okay. Personnel? Anything on that? Nope. Questions? Equipment and solid waste? Anything, any questions on equipment and solid waste?
Jerry?
Yes, Mr.?
Not on equipment and solid, could I back up the personnel?
Yep.
Um, just a question, the welder position that's still open, is part of the requirement, they have to be a certified welder?
The welder requirement was, they had to be a New York State DOT certified?
Well, I mean, I've heard this conversation, bits and pieces floating around the county, and I've also heard this over the years, I mean, I've known people that welded their entire life, and they just never went and took the test. So, why would we not be willing to try, get somebody, hire them, and then take the test after? Is that not allowed?
We, we actually just reclassified the position to be a construction equipment mechanic, because virtually, they do the same thing every day. Um, the construction equipment mechanic position requires someone to do welding, to perform welding, um, just doesn't require the New York State DOT certification. So, our hope was to get someone back on staff to help us with construction equipment maintenance most of the time, and then send them to school to get that.
Yeah, because I knew a guy at Whiteface that that's all he did was weld, but he never went and took the certification test. So, it's like, well, then if we're having an issue, why wouldn't we help them?
Well, you can do that, and, and any title that has a, has a minimum qualification that is problematic or difficult, you could always do a training position, which essentially allows that the individual has a year to, in which to be certified.
Cause the cert, the certification is just a matter of testing, correct?
Right, that's correct.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
I think the gist of this problem is, is the lack of, uh, money in this position.
Yeah, well, we'll have that discussion next meeting.
I mean, Randy wants to raise payroll across the board, but, I'm not for that, but if you gotta pay more for a welder.
We're, we're gonna have that discussion next meeting.
You have anything else?
I, I have one more resolution, it's regarding Household Hazardous Waste Day. Um, I'd like a resolution to reimburse the town of North Elba sixty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and twenty cents for...
Less, less fish.
I'm gonna move that motion.
For the household hazardous waste day.
Mr. Pleeny, are you moving that?
Absolutely.
So, we have a second on that?
Oh.
We don't have a second on it. Nobody's willing to second that.
No, sorry.
Until he gives up the fish money.
Mr. Manal seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Anything else, Noel? That's it, anything else for Jim? Mr. Manal?
Yeah, just go back to the, uh, where we had, uh, prepared business specs for restain in the exterior building in Little Whiteface.
Yep.
That stained one?
What's that?
Was stained?
That was stained as part of the original project a number of years ago, but it's been that, an issue. Uh, that contract has been awarded, and that contractor's actually starting today.
Did you specify what kind of stain to use this time?
We specified what kind of stain to use this time, yes.
Are they also gonna repair the fascias on that building?
That's correct, yes. Yep.
Anything else for Jim? If not, thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Could you?
Yep.
What was the sixty-six thousand for, just?
Roby doesn't know.
Roby don't know. So, I mean, it'd be nice to share that with us.
That was our disposal cost for the, the three household hazardous waste days that we had.
Wonderful, thank you.
The money funnels through North Elba, we then pay them back.
Yeah, that's fine.
We get fifty percent reimbursement.
Just like the Norwes.
Money's laundered through North Elba.
Yeah, we launder it through. Make sure you get that paid.
Okay, Jim, thanks.
Any way I can get my fish paid for.
Dave, come on up. Morning, Dave. Do you all have your soil water report?
Yes.
When Dave gets up there, we'll see. Any questions for Dave on the soil water report? Dave, yours?
Um, real quickly, just to follow up on your discussions, I don't wanna belabor it, but, uh, the discussions on, on fish, um, at the hatchery, we have had quite a few inquiries from the private entities, and so if there is fish for sale, we do have some people that have expressed some interest, some larger lake, private lake associations, and also some people with smaller ponds, because the issue here is in Essex County is that, if we, unless we get a large number of people that want fish, they have to be brought in from Chataque, or all the way up from lower Washington County, and it's quite a ways for somebody to come up for just a, a few fish, but if we could do it locally here, uh, there is some interest there, whether they go directly to the hatchery or whatever, but there is some people out there that are looking for fish privately.
Yeah, I'm glad Dave brought that up, cause that was brought up at the Soil Water Board, that Dave told us that there was, uh, agent, uh, entities out there that wanted to buy fish, and we decided, we're not gonna be in the, Soil Water's not gonna be in the fish business, we're not gonna go somewhere else and draw them up here for them, be the middle person, let them contact the county, county has fish, no problem. Everybody else have your, thank you, Dave, for, he minded me in that. Charlie, you got something?
I believe some, uh, fish hatcheries across the state have issues with the health of their fish also. I would hate to think that we would be, uh, managing our waters with fish from outside the area.
Oh, that's true. I, I hadn't thought about that, when you're bringing, when you're bringing fish in from other, other counties. And I do know the comment has been, is that they're, they're very happy with, uh, the health of the fish at our hatchery, is that they've never had a, a bad test or anything like that, so it certainly wouldn't be something that you would wanna bring something in that they could potentially spread.
Okay, good. Anything else, Dave?
Um, I just wanted to highlight, I, I believe it's in my report, but I just wanna talk about that, uh, we, we did hold a, a wonderful tour of our Champlain watershed, uh, um, projects that were completed. Um, this year, we, we picked Washington County to kinda get a variety of, of projects that happened down there, everything from, uh, a stream train program that a couple of the town guys from, um, town Tyconderoga came down and participated in down in Granville, and then there were several, uh, agricultural projects, and then some of our, um, projects along, um, roadside erosion and the sediment basins that we've used here in, uh, Essex County. And it went over very well, we had, uh, Dan Steck was there with some representatives from Betty Little's office, and representative from, um, Elise Stefanics' office, and they were very impressed and excited about some of the things that were going on in the Lake Champlain watershed. And, an opportunity for that is that we're, we're looking at signing a contract with the DEC to put together, um, some funding for what we call Rural Road Active Management Program, that would basically make New York into a, Vermont has had a program for years called Better Back Roads. The goal would be is to take this program and, and possibly even make it statewide, but it would bring some money into our local communities for both planning, roadside projects, and also for implementation of those projects, and each town would, would get an opportunity to, to apply for that money. So, this is an opportunity to provide money to the towns that would, that would help, help you guys out with your budget, be able to do these, uh, roadside erosion projects that, that aren't really in the budget. You have money to, to pave the roads, but when you come into the, you know, some of these roadside erosion concerns that, that happen while you're doing the paving and drainage, this would give you money to not have to take that out of your town budget, so. It's a, it's a great opportunity, hopefully in the next year or so, we're gonna get a, a nice event put together, utilizing the, the entities that we had from the, the Assembly, Senate, and, uh, the Congress to, to try to push that through, bring federal highway money in, state, state money in for that program.
That tour was last Thursday, and I wanna personally thank Mr. Gardner for taking that tour on Soil Water's behalf, and spending all day with Dave, thank you, I really appreciate it, I didn't have to go.
It was very interesting, I've heard a lot down there, and, uh, they, it was a great program, that they brought out there, and I think they, um, serve a lot.
Yes.
Getting the information out there, but also, he's gonna have one up here, I think, and try to, maybe in the next year or so, supervise how to go, but just to get more insight into what's happening.
Thank you. Anything else, Jim?
Uh, my only other comment, it falls into DPW realm, is, uh, privately, I participated in the, uh, Dog Agility Show at the fairgrounds, we had the Harvest Festival, and we had the horse show, and the fairgrounds was, was jumping. On Saturday, we had the, uh, we had the parking lot almost as full as a, as a day at fair, and there was a lot of people there, a lot of great comments, we had people that came from our dog show, uh, we had people that come from all over New England, and they thought it was a, a great event. A lot of them went over and saw the horse show that was going on, or participated in the Harvest Fest. Uh, the comment to me was that some of the people that came down from Clinton County, and they had their, um, their farmer's market on Saturday, they said, oh, wow, we're always disappointed because we miss our farmer's market when we come down, and they were so excited that they were able to actually get some of the local produce here, uh, because they, they were missing their own farmer's market up there in Plattsburgh, so, it was a great event, I thought.
I expected a call from you on Sunday, but evidently, I didn't win the dog rug that I took the ticket on Thursday.
No, no, one of, one of our Clinton County K-9 members up in, uh, Plattsburgh area, one...
You want to pay down the dogs?
Yeah.
No, don't put that in the paper.
No.
Dogs. That was for the dogs to lay on.
Uh, Mr. Manal?
Yeah, uh, one of the problems we have with, uh, town superintendent is control erosion.
Yep.
And, years ago, when we had, uh, it used to be before CHIPS, it was called the Donovan Plan, the state would have an inspector who worked areas, and he would check, you had to do the road job and, to the specs, and, and if they had something in there, uh, pertaining to erosion, and, you know, it would kinda force them to, to some measures to control erosion. Cause now, your, your CHIPS money, you go out, spend it on pavement, walk away from it, they pay it, but they, they really, they really, and I, should be someone overseeing it, there should be a state job, like it was, and, but if you're gonna do a mile of road, you put in the drainage and the cement, there should be a, a portion in there where you're required to do erosion control, because we all know what happens, you've got a new ditch, and a new pavement, you get the first gully washer, there's no measures taken, but it, it would be a good part. washer, no measures taken, but it would be a good part of the CHIPS program if it was incorporated, it probably never would be, but...
Well, this is, this is our opportunity now, we're trying to get funds to address those issues. We've actually done roadside erosion inventories in the Lake Champlain Basin and we, last year we completed them in the Upper Hudson region, which would cover the Scrone area and so those are in the books, looking at those erosion, things that were done through Soil and Water Conservation District, through those watershed organizations. The goal is if we can take this Rural Roads Program statewide, we can try to get more funding for it so those things can be addressed and each municipality can find that. The goal is, is to try to do it without making it mandatory. Just so you know, is that Vermont has passed a Clean Water Act for Vermont, that they are making it mandatory for their local towns to go out and do roadside erosion inventories and the roads that drain directly into any kind of water body, if they're not addressed in the next 10 years, those towns are going to be fined.
That's what I mean, it's not forcible and now it's voluntary.
Right, so let's keep it voluntary and there's money out there and we'll do the assessments and at this point, we'll continue to try to assist with doing those assessments and making sure we can come up with funds.
If you got a superintendent doesn't think it's necessary, it's not done.
Well, we're working every time we can, we're working with the highway superintendents at the association and individually to do the best we can.
Anything else? If not, we're all set, we stand adjourned.